... board, and we have members of Temporary Solar Advisory Committee. And together, we hopefully can answer your questions. What we have put forth is a language to be voted on at January 17th town meeting for a temporary moratorium on solar, large-scale solar development in the town, so we can have a little breathing room to discuss and research a little more impacts of solar in the town of Warren. Any questions on that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Slide 12 right here.
There are members of the selectmen, but this isn't theirs.
This is what?
This is not theirs to own. They can visit as citizens.
Okay, so this is just a venting thing?
This is not a venting thing. It is to discuss the language of the temporary moratorium. By law, we have to have a public hearing addressing...
So this is a public hearing?
It's a public hearing.
Thank you. I mean, I'm just, I'm a very mister, I like questions answered, every single one, because I've been to school in my life a hell of a long time, so I don't want to have unanswered questions. So I won't be answering questions, so if you guys are concerned about that, they'll come and shut up, I'm still going to voice mine right through school.
Okay. We will answer your questions. Do you have questions for him?
No.
All right.
I am Derek Bellis, and I'm part of the planning board.
You're what?
Part of the planning board.
What planning board?
The planning board.
As a member.
Oh, the planning board. And what's your name again?
Derek Bellis.
Bennys?
Bellis.
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 Bellis, oh, okay. Yeah, the first one was hard, yeah, there's a B, you have to imagine.
I'm Kathy Zoff, I'm the Secretary of the Planning Board.
Nice name.
Well, who's the planning board member?
Kevin Schmidt, I'm the Task Collector and a member of the Solar Advisory Committee.
Bill Ramsey, Chairman of the Planning Board.
Bill, I know you.
Yes, please do.
And on the good first line, I'm Joyce Ihacker, I am on the Solar Advisory Committee and Chair of Conservation Commission.
I'm Rachel Carney, and I have the Assistant Assistant, and I'm on the Solar Advisory Committee.
I'm Don McCloskey, I'm a board fellow.
So the handouts you have have the language of the moratorium, they have information about some of the topics that the Solar Advisory Committee has been reviewing, and a little summary of the information from the mountain land. Is that right? The Solar Advisory Committee was organized because there were a few citizens in town who expressed interest and concern about solar in our town, and how a few neighborhoods in the area have been saturated by solar. Can everyone hear me? And because of these diligent citizens, the Solar Advisory Committee was put together. They had a whole series of questions that we were only partly able to answer, and the rest of them were, needed to be researched. And that is really ultimately the reason that the Solar Advisory Committee was organized. And so now there's a group of people, representatives from boards and committees in the town that have contact with any solar development, and as well as a few citizens. And really, frankly, that is as far as we are. We have been doing homework, each of us have gone on our separate way, and we get together once every year of the week and have a conversation about the things that we've discovered. Some of it is very positive, some of it is not necessarily negative, but maybe we want to consider tightening up our bylaws around because of the information that we're finding. So we are just at the beginning of this process, and therefore, the moratorium, which again will be voted on at the meeting, the town, the special meeting on the 17th of January, if you vote yes for the temporary moratorium, that means that no new solar projects can be submitted to the town until after the town votes in the May meeting. And that just gives a little breathing room for some homework. If you vote no for the moratorium on January 17th, that means that we don't have that breathing room, and more solar projects continue to come into the town during that time, under the current zoning bylaw.
Question?
Yes.
Between now and 17th, are there any other, like, whatever solar companies coming in town, or are we going to put it on hold?
Can't say. Well, we can't put it on hold until the vote on the 17th, so between now and then, we could have 200 new applications, we could have five.
Well, but you have to process those applications.
Right. We have to accept the applications if they are complete, and proper procedure takes place.
Well, do you have any pending right now?
Yes, we have five in the queue.
Five what?
Five. There's five currently in the permitting process.
Is public knowledge where these five are going to be?
Of course it is, because they're all...
That won't you know offhand?
Yes, I can tell you. There's three on Coy Hill, one on Reed Street.
Oh, crap.
And, oh.
Where are my...
Little Rest Road.
No, right, it's not. Oh, and Cronin Road.
Probably just came in. That's not going on.
Okay.
Okay, so there's three on Coy Hill, one on Reed Street, thank you very much, no thank you. There is one on...
Little Rest.
No, thank you. And there's one on Cronin.
Oh, right, I forgot, Little Rest and then...
Cutler.
Well, I'm sorry, sorry. I was saying Coy Hill, one on Cutler, two on Coy Hill. I'm calling it Coy Hill because it's up in that...
Did they just bring in...
There's two on Coy Hill.
No, the Cutler one is, the hill one, that's at the very, very top of...
I'm on Cutler Road extension.
No, the one for Cutler Road is the one we're working on right now in town.
It's in the permitting process.
That you have been...
Coy Hill, Coy Hill being in the moratorium?
Yes.
Taking the Cutler Road?
Yes.
On the...
Coy Hill property knows the two.
Four, five, six, seven, nine projects, potentially between the 17th, if they can beat their butts along on it, or none.
Where do you get that number from?
Well, you said three Coy Hill, one Reed Street, one Little Rest, one Cronin, two Coy Hill, or one Cutler Road.
Okay, you just said two Coy Hill, okay. There's two Coy Hills, one Cutler.
That makes a day.
Okay, so that's three. Three at the top of that area of town. One Reed Street, one Little Rest.
Right.
Okay.
Cronin.
And Cronin, which is really just the road right now.
That's okay.
Yeah.
And then...
It's no panels.
And then Cutler. Right?
No, 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 Cutler. Two Coy Hill, one Cutler. Cutler is really up there at the top of Coy's Hill.
Two Coy Hills, one Cutler, one Reed Street, one Little Rest.
Yes.
And Little Rest ain't so little. All right. Are the other ones little, or are they big projects?
They vary in sizes.
Well, what's the Reed Street one? It's out of the next me, but they all affect me.
Reed Street is about five megawatts.
Reed Street, all these that have been listed and you have just written down are large solar fields, which require a special permit and a site plan. Anything that requires a site plan and a special permit is large. Now, by large, we have anything from five megawatts and up.
Wait, so all these are large special site plans, special permits?
Yes.
We mean, they're large. Let's just say they're large.
Derek?
They vary between three and five or eight football fields.
Yeah, they're large. They're big, exponentially big.
Yes, okay, so Joyce, I have a clarifier question. Is it that for the moratorium, section number two, is it that the special permits will not be issued, as what the text says, or the special permit will not be applied for? I think the process can begin, but it cannot finish, is the purpose of the moratorium.
No, it can't.
We reject the...
There's no new...
Filing.
There's no new filing.
I don't see those words in section two. All I see is, no special permit may be issued, is...
We didn't talk about what they...
A temporary moratorium, section two says temporary moratorium, and begins with not outstanding any other provisions.
So the language really does mean that we cannot accept new applications?
No permit may be issued means we cannot accept.
Well, I mean, when, once the clock starts, then you have to go through the whole process, which would include permitting. So they, Planning Board in particular, cannot accept a new project, because they have by law 90 days to complete it.
But I think the text should reflect that.
To complete it.
But I think the text should be more clear. If I was a solar guy, I should either be told, "I'm sorry, we're not accepting your application," or just let you know that the 90 days doesn't affect us because we have this moratorium. You get some answer, but the text doesn't clarify that.
And NYI, you need a lawyer to look over this crap and make sure they can't get through the...
Yes, we have a lawyer who actually submitted that to us.
Well, I don't know what your lawyer looks like, but mine's better.
Well, we have a town that pays for our lawyer.
I'll pay for mine.
All right.
Oh, my gosh, now I can't even look at this. Is your lawyer Bennys still? He's good, but he doesn't know about solar law. He don't know if Bennys is... He's a good guy, but he ain't an expert.
Okay, that's, we can't thank you, that's just feedback. Jay?
Yeah, the permission are already put forth. Will this one be put on the back burner and go get work done?
No, everything that is currently in the process is, needs to be, we need to continue with.
Okay, thank you.
That's these five.
Yes.
You mean, all these five that you just listed are going forward?
Yes, they have to by law.
Okay, well, I want to ask a question. In Sturbridge, if you cut down a tree, you have to replace that tree, you don't have that to affect her?
Where does that say that, please?
In Sturbridge, not here, in Sturbridge.
No, no, you don't have that, because what's happening, folks, and you all know, and most of you know, that the property is being contracted out by the landowners, the large for yardy, the property, the large fields that we have in town, landowners. They're contracting out to a logging company to come out of 61, 61A, okay, which is set by DCI, the Department of Conservation, Recreation, Forests, and Forests. They're going ahead and having their property cut out under commercial, which changes...
So they don't have to replace the tree?
They don't have to replace a thing at that time, because they're doing the logging and... According to the state, so many areas, lodge areas in this state have been not paying back taxes. And I'll use, for example, folks, the Coy Hill Sullivan property. Coy Hill Sullivan property has been under chapter 61 for about 30, 40 years. And over the past 15 years, they have not paid their taxes based on the 61, 61A. They have not paid. Okay? So if you look on the bulletin board out across from Nancy Lowell's office, you can find that all the large landowners who haven't paid. And you can see the hundreds of thousands of dollars of dollars that have not been paid in taxes. So the state went after these large landowners and others, and told them, "Pay, or we're going to take action." So they went out, and as I said a minute ago, contracted, loggers to come in, and selectively cut, and in some areas, clear cut. By law, a landowner has the right to do so.
Joyce? If you cut more than an acre of land, or there's a certain amount, then you have to get a forest cutting plan, and you can't clear cut.
Under a forest cutting plan, it's a 10-year plan. Forest cutting plan is set by the state, comes in, looks at your property, sets it all up for you, they selectively cut and cut out. So during these timeframes, these people looking at their back taxes, they're having the logging, logging companies come in and cut.
To make money?
Say again.
To make money, to pay their taxes?
Pay their taxes, supposedly. During this timeframe, a lot of this has been taking place in the last nine and a half, 10 years. During that timeframe, solar came in, all right? So, when property's being cut, and back taxes are posted on the public boards in the town hall here, solar companies are just going in, getting copies, and following them up. They knock on the door, talk to a person who has 80, 100, 250 acres, and 240 acres up on the hill.
So our town's been...
Companies turn around, offer some dollars, offer some the right thing, and take over there and pay their back taxes, pay their taxes for the next 20 years, and give them X amount of dollars per quarter, per year. The town is making money by getting back taxes paid, and the tax taxes will be continually paid for the life of these solar fields. That's how it's being done. At that time, the solar companies evolved where they've got either written contracts or contracts in the works. Soon as that cutting is done, as in one up on Coy Hill, the solar company goes out, and every one of us sees cars driving around town in trucks. Most of you have no idea where they're going. They're going up in areas where people have blocked their property, their loggers, they haven't cut out, they pay back taxes. You've got two surveyors going in, or three, they survey the property for a landowner, who also has a deal with the solar company. When the property is surveyed out, it goes to the solar company, so the solar companies perform, plan out their solar fields, and then they process starts by coming down, going in the Nancy Lowell's office. As soon as an individual walks in, there's a, excuse me, a format for them to follow, set by the planning board. What they have to do, this stuff sits there every day, and he looks at them all over. Many have been questioned, that have been come in, because they don't follow the format. They're trying to skip paragraph two, section three, or whatever. Nancy Lowell accepts them, and as soon as she puts the stamp on what she has to, the time starts.
How much time does it stand?
Planning Board has 65 days to hear, or get them in order, and then 90 days to have a finding on it. During that timeframe, for even the past six months, we've been inundated with more and more.
Right.
So, with the group that's sitting here this evening, and you folks here tonight to hopefully support or just get information out of it, January 17th, you decide what you wish, what you want to do. The individuals here, and a few of the others in the audience, to see what you came for. The planning board over the last 21 years that I've been sitting on, it has been trying to get plans and bylaws changed to keep this down, moving ahead gradually, and not being inundated by the outside, because the outside doesn't see it from their houses we do. It's about time people decided to get involved. Because every time someone says something, that we open up 67 for commercial, well, why are we going to put out a business over here, or over here? Because there is no place else in town, folks, and we're trying to keep it so it can be this way, keep it point, but still make some money. All right, so with the advisory board, and the individuals who now have seen the light, and did some research, and now have started to get involved more and more, thank you, you have a committee that now wants to have a moratorium. A moratorium you've just set aside so many times, so much time, so that we can all sit, get together, tighten up the bylaws, yet every one of you people sitting here tonight better understand, you cannot deny them. You cannot deny solar. And if you can, there's only one landfall decision. All right? That's it. You cannot deny it. The federal government, the state says you can't. I made a statement on the floor in May of this year, that we will not be pushed over by them. They will not tell us what we're doing, they are going to work with us. We will not work with them. They will work with us, Joyce.
The purpose of the bylaws is to strengthen the language of our current, I mean, the purpose of the bylaw is to protect the town and the citizens, and you have questions?
Two quick ones, yeah. Just one small thing on the concerns. I wonder if we could consider adding an A, which would be impacts on wildlife? It's just mentioned somewhere else, but it's not in there. My other comment I'd like to make is, I've heard often in these meetings that we cannot deny, we need to understand that we cannot deny. My feeling is, we have not denied, and as a town, we've actually left solar come in, and we've accommodated the initiative to solar energy. But there is a point where we can say, well, we haven't denied, we've allowed it, and now we're not going to allow it anymore, because it's starting to impact our way of life, our health and welfare. So I do...
I was just going to say, we, in doing our homework, in looking at other bylaws in other towns, there can be restrictions. Some towns put a cap on the number of solar projects that exist in the town, and it's based on a variety of things, so that is one approach that some towns do. Other towns restrict the type of, or the specific area, they have a zone. This is the solar zone, and you could only build in this particular area, so that's something that we can look at. The original intent was for solar to go into, and it even says this in the model bylaw, the state does say they don't want trees cut down, they don't want solar farms to go on forested area or on farms, but preferably degraded areas like gravel pits, parking lots, rooftops, and dumps, landfills, that type of thing, where there's already an existing degradation. Brownfields, if it's possible to do it without further disruption, that type of thing. So there are things that we can look at that will help us keep the beauty of our town, and also perhaps still continue to allow solar to come in. Degraded areas, we have some in town, we have, there could be certain zones. There's so many different avenues that we have available to us to look at, that have already been approved by the Attorney General in other towns.
And I just have to be excited. So we're also looking at the cost of decommissioning, when the solar panels are either obsolete or run through their 25-year life cycle. So we're looking at ways that we can have these companies put up bond, treasurer, in amounts, you know, significant enough to, you know, if the town has to come in and clean it up because the company's taken off. And that happens a lot of times, the solar company, you know, solar field, and then they'll sell the equipment to somebody else, and they'll sell it to somebody else, and it's really hard to keep...
So you mean dollars?
To keep contact information.
We're doing that.
Same contact information for our fire department to be able to get in touch with them if there's something going on. So that's another one of the types of things we're looking at, besides citing.
Let me just make sure I understand that. So we, we have all these solar fields, that we are going to be responsible for cleaning up once they reach their time.
They're on posted, but we're just looking at ways to tighten that up.
Yeah, we're trying to prevent that.
Currently, there is, there are decommissioning bonds that have, that are paper bonds, they're not cash bonds. And one of them is a cash bond. And we have to keep track of that. Every time the solar company sells and it changes hands, it's up to our treasurer to keep track and figure out who that is, because we don't always, you know, it's just another thing under a plate.
Is there a way to write that into our bylaws?
Um, well...
Well, that's what we want to explore.
We are, we're definitely looking at different ways to make it tighter and maybe safer, so there is no opportunity for that cash bond to become inviolated.
Cash bonds, since in our bank account.
I mean, not the cash, the paper bonds.
Cash, cash bonds, since in our bank account. We have, we can go to it, if we need to use the money to take down solar.
What's with the paper bonds? I mean, you've got cash bonds, you can get the cash to correct the situation, but paper bonds, it's just you burn under that, or what?
Like insurance policy.
It's an insurance policy, essentially.
So then you have to go through the insurance company, get the cash, clean up their...
It would be like any other construction bond that exists.
The difference is, it's a longer term, so you're looking 10 or 20 years out. So for a construction bond, you're typically with your budget.
Right.
Year, two years from your budget. But this, you're looking at 20 years. So you don't even know what it's going to cost 20 years from now to get rid of these things. So it's better to have a cash bond, at least some kind of, you know, hard money in an account, that we can, if we need to take it down, go withdraw those funds.
Right.
It goes to one, it's like an insurance policy, which, you know, the company pays, the company pays, or whatever. So I'm not an expert on bonds, it's a treasurer, right? You know, it's essentially, that's the...
Could you speak up, please? Could you speak up, please?
I can. Do you want me to say all that over again?
Yeah, there's a lot of people that didn't hear it. But you're all...
So, what I started out by saying was, Joyce was talking about deciding issues, where you put them, cutting down trees, all of that stuff, another aspect we're looking at. Can you hear me back there?
Yes.
Is the decommissioning of these solar fields, taking them down, right? So we want to make sure that, if we have money someplace, we want to put some teeth in the bylaw as far as cash bonds, or some way to make sure that the town can take down these installations if the companies have disappeared by the time it's time to take them down. That's pretty much all I'm sure, is what I'm saying.
And how did you determine how much that bond was?
I'm not sure how it has been determined up to this point, but Bob didn't...
So what the planning board does is, we go out to our engineering firm, we have construction engineers calculate what it would cost at a reasonable rate of today's rate. And then they escalate that out 20 years, so that way, at the end of 20 years, if the problem is 25, and the project's at its life, then if all is escalated correctly, it should be enough money to decommission the thing when we get there.
Including inflation?
Yes, I just said it, it's an escalation.
Wow, some people don't know that's a situation. Do you have another safety factor built into that?
Well, Karen, you know, Karen was just talking about with maybe a cash bond versus a paper bond, and those are the things that we can look at. Those are also conditions that the planning board can set in order for the project to be approved. So in other words, we can tell a company, "We're not going to accept a paper bond, you have to have a cash bond, and if you don't have a cash bond, we're not going to approve your special permit," which means you can't construct. So those are things that we can do, but we have to, you know, we as planning board members, we're not financiers, so we have to be careful about what we, the decisions we make, and make sure with our treasurer and the other people that do handle the money for the town, that it's the proper thing to do. And then, as an order of condition, we can just tell them this is the way it's going to be.
We can't do that now, right?
Yeah, we can do it on any project.
You can do it on Little Rest, and all these little properties.
Well, those who've already started engineering on it, I'll have to check on that.
Yeah, because that might be a good thing, because these Little Rest people and me are very upset about all these properties where they're going ahead and cutting all our trees down. I'm sorry, am I keying in here?
No, just usually raise our hands.
Oh, I did, I went like this, and they looked at me. I went like this. I'm very unspoken in case you didn't notice.
So, and there are other things, I mean, there are a lot, there are a lot of things you have to look at and research and try to educate ourselves about batteries, so I don't know if any of these batteries, we know the map of batteries in them, but...
Not yet, but all the ones that are being permitted because of the new SMART program require battery arrays, and we have very little information about those, so we're trying to, you know, we're trying to get as much information as we can on those. We're trying to find out who takes retired solar panels, what happens in 15, 20, or 30 years with the solar panels.
I've got a couple of solar experts that can answer those questions.
You have solar experts? Will they know what to do with 430,000 solar panels?
I got, I got a guy on some...
Can you say that number again, please? So one on one side currently has 440,000 solar panels, do I have that right?
Yes, it's a football field, it's a football field.
It's a lot, it's a football field of, so there are, in an acre, okay, the solar guys in the room, tell me what an acre of solar panels, one acre of solar panels without the land, just the solar panels themselves?
Sure. So I think, so the Little Rest, I think we're somewhere at like 12,000, that's off the top of my head. So per megawatt, you're at about 3,000.
Okay.
About four acres to a megawatt, so a little bit less than 1,000 per acre.
Okay, and explain that in common terms, is that a football field, a half a football field, what we're talking about?
Two hundred feet by 200 feet panels.
Of panels alone, without the land, just the surface area of the panels. So you're saying it's 3,000 panels for...
3,000.
For a megawatt.
For a megawatt.
That's off my head, I'm having to send something in right there.
All right.
So how much land is a megawatt?
A megawatt would be five acres.
About four acres, roughly.
A megawatt is five acres?
Four acres.
Four acres.
Please don't stick...
Please don't stick up to megawatts, because the solar panels are being more efficient, so the one that makes today a hundred, tomorrow it's going to do a two hundred.
Right.
So I like to keep it as football fields.
Yeah, I do too, because I can't do acres. I'm sorry, I'm a city girl, was forced to come to the country. I guess I'm a country girl now, for years.
Ten.
All right, so the major benefit, long-term benefit that the solar brings is paying taxes.
Correct.
And I think we have the estimate that each of the solar fields in town is on average paying something like sixteen thousand dollars per year. I think that's the current, somebody had to do this, right? So during the permitting process, is it relatively well-known, in a very tight range, what that tax would be, since it's a formula, somebody has, and you know exactly how many panels are going to be, so we would know upfront how much, how much the tax bill would be, how much the town would get. It seems that that would definitely be known, or a shock or later, it's known on plan.
I mean, I said, it's, right, it should be, well, what they do is, well, so, what they frequently do is set up a pilot. So what, the selectmen and the planning board, are they even on the pilot plans? Or it's just the selectmen? So the selectmen get with the solar companies and say, okay, if you want to put this in the town, it's going to cost you X number of thousand dollars a year. So payment due taxes is how it's set up. Then they say that you can't have a pilot program, you have to base it on the value that you put, so the improvement will end.
So then...
And so what it is, what it has been up until now, is the selectmen just strike a deal with the solar companies.
So two different solar fields of the same size might be paying different taxes.
Back then.
No, no, not back, just going forward each of the twenty-five years.
Back before, when there was a pilot plan. Now there's not, so they have to actually pay taxes on the improvement in the land.
But two, two places that are both five megawatts should be paying about the same taxes. It doesn't matter where they're located, or how beautiful the land was, or scenic vistas, or anything, it's just, for herds of grazing.
The only, the only one they get, the only party that is privy to negotiating a price for the solar field is to be better on the land. Currently, solar farms are trying to pay people that own property that they want to put these large facilities on, anywhere between seven and nine thousand dollars per megawatt. But if you're a landowner and you have three hundred acres, and they want to put twenty megawatts on it, you can tell them you want ten thousand. And if they're willing to pay it, that's what they'll pay you. The town has to apply the taxes by the law, which is on the improvement of the property. Once it's out of the agricultural tax.
He's got to stand up on him. He's kind of up to stand on his... I know, but he thinks...
So, yeah, I, we're changing topics a little bit, think, comment on the water and hydrology. In the last presentation, the solar presentation, it looked to me like they were bringing all the water to the edge of the property, into a retaining pond.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if one of the concerns that we can look at over the next several months would be to figure out if, I guess I would like to recharge the land as it's being recharged now. So when you do a building, you have to really come up with where the water drainage is going, and you have to actually leave the water on the property that you're building. In most cases, not all. And I'm just curious to know, how, how can we work this into the language, or how can we consider this? Because obviously, water is going to leave the property, there's a stream out there on the slope, but it, I just feel like the water should be recharged where it falls as much as possible.
You are, you're right. So part of the, part of the things that we are looking at right now are, maybe because a lot of the projects are currently going on steep slopes, it's hard to recharge the water without slowing it down. There is grass, you know, they'll reseed it with meadow. It doesn't perform the same way that trees do. Trees do a variety of things. There are vertical water tanks, they store the water, they, their roots reach deep, and they pull water up, or they eat water, and then they let it sink down further. When there's no trees to slow things down, the water will go to the edge of property and go onto the neighboring property. The basins on the bottom of the property will channel, and currently, they do this on all of the projects, they channel the water into an exit pipe that even if there's a level spreader, the water will find its favorite spot to flow, and it will end up a point source onto a neighbor's, or at least downgraving. It could be a neighbor's property. Currently, with the, with the new bylaw in place, it can't be closer than a hundred and fifty feet, right? Because we have a hundred and fifty feet natural buffer that's supposed to exist between the neighboring property. So, I mean, that offers some, some safety. But you're right, we are looking at and considering hydrology because that's a significant part of a problem.
Good question. The natural buffer keeps on coming up. I've talked to several solar companies about this, that they're doing projects. And their interpretation of a natural buffer, as long as there's green grass or there's something growing there, it's natural. They can cut down the trees right down.
Yep.
And remove everything. But as long as there's shrub there, that's natural.
That's a really good point, because the language was needs to be addressed to allow for a tree or forested buffer. If it existed, or an untouched, unforested buffer. Sure.
Because that's, C board made that very clear to me, that as long as we put something there that's green, we're in violation of the bylaw.
Sure.
Yeah, I understand. And, and again, it's service, replace a tree with cutting a tree. And also, what, how does it affect our aquifers? I want to know that.
We don't know.
Well, we've got mine out.
This is Dave Johnson, can I speak first? We got Dave Johnson right there, just sat down on the water department. Dave, can you add something on what those solar fields could do to our aquifers in town?
We're talking about what these solar panels are doing for food to improve water and change out as an aquifer to our aquifer. Because it not only collects solar, they're going to collect water, and they're going to change the amount of water that that land has to absorb. And where does that excess water go? Is it going to go run past anybody else's well? Is it going to go past unsanated area and pick that and dump it into a well?
The commissioner said everything wrong, okay? So you know.
What did you say?
And he said everything wrong. Each well is recharged every year. It depends on, you can have that pool. Wash it after, it goes to a drainage, flush those where it falls on the area.
So going back to the one hundred and fifty foot buffer, and how the, the problem is when the owners cut the, all the trees all the way to the edge of the property. Now, I believe, be it the planning board has the right, has the conditions, if we're approving it, we can tell them we have to put the trees and put it back to the old was. So at least there's something, but I agree, we have to, if we get the moratorium, we will have time to work, do our homework and make it re-better. Because, yeah, I remember the mention, one of the solar companies was interpreting that as natural, like, yeah, whatever.
Right.
Right, because by, by the time the solar people get into it, it's already been logged and stripped, and there's absolutely no trees. I can vouch for that, it's in my backyard right now. There are no trees. And so what a natural buffer is now, what it looks like, is nothing. There are, there's nothing to hold that rainwater. I have a swamp starting already, I can imagine what it will be like once the solar panels, if they go in, are in.
Swamps cause mosquitoes, freeze disease.
Where once I had trees, I'll have some cabbage.
But once you had trees, you'll have disease and mosquitoes and contamination.
Oh, yeah, Linda just brought up a good point. We're looking at property values. It's, I, we did some initial research last year on this, and it was kind of hard to tell property values adjacent to a solar farm. But if your land becomes a wetland because you're adjacent to getting solar installed, then your property values would be affected. So I do think that's another piece of the property value research we might like to...
Some of the things that they're looking at too, we're looking at, and I know it could be the topic here, and also the conservation, is where they put their retention ponds. Okay? They put their retention ponds where they want, where they're telling us where the water's going to flow from. We had a question down a couple of rows about the retention ponds and where it was going. Well, that, all of a sudden, came a revised plan that night, and we got to look into it. As a matter of fact, they did say, and I believe I might, please correct me, that they had wetlands biologists go in and look at the wetlands. And then this company threw up the plan. Well, quote, "We found some other wetlands, so we're going to have to revise the plans." So those are the things that have to be looked at. Over the years, where the retention ponds have gone, Joyce, myself, conservation, and planning had an incident down here with the one on Spring Street. That turned out to be a nightmare. Conservation did great. There were some revisions made, some changes made and stuff, and they were questioned. It becomes a, if you're not there twenty-four seven, if you're not there, everybody in this pla, in this room tonight, in the course of the lifetime of the building of that solar field, has been the engineer on site. Because when you go down and ask for who's on site today, is Paul here, the engineer? Well, he's moved on to another project. Excuse me, I'm not picking on anybody, but Sarah and Sally. Well, holy Christmas, no, now we got another number, and I got another person, and they're not explaining what happened the last time. So to do a lot of this, you have to look at the plans. What has come in in the last few weeks have gone back. Mr. Suzel, full of a plan, said a plan's over the other night at the table. They weren't even the ones that were being talked about, that they were showing, and Bob said to him, "Until you have the right plans and the revised plans, you're wasting our time."
Thank you.
So they will do anything to get in. And when checks and balances, people will call them laws, rules, and regulations, checks and balances and more, and more people showing concerns, then that will take place. Each year, we've been adjusting. You don't learn on the first one because they have more money, they, but they kind of has liver pills, and then you turn right around, and they're going to get more money when it comes out at the beginning of the next session. And they'll buy property. Eight hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars for Sullivan's property paid. The rest of them are all lease. How about that? We're going to get eight ninety-nine.
I know that.
Okay, so you turn around, and you try to learn each time to adjust the bylaws. I've been in front of the town now about five, six times over solar bylaws. And you can't say we're not trying to do anything about it, you just can't get, catch up with them. They've got fifty people sneaking around, and engineers coming out of every looking cranny and every community college, all the way up to an architectural college, engineering college, MIT that they're doing it. And we're part-time, this is a small pumpkin patch at the end of Worcester County. All right? But we're going to stand up with you and everybody else, and we're going to challenge them each time.
So January seventeenth is the special town meeting, which now has twenty-one articles.
Ooh.
It's been cut down to twenty?
To nineteen.
Okay, that still means that it may be a long meeting, I don't know where we fall. Please show up and vote for the moratorium if it suits your needs. Yes.
How do we see those articles that are proposed now?
So, did you, yes, at the clerk's office, right?
The town's clerk office, was everybody...
Can you put them on the site, too? Everybody's ready?
Please bring up on the site all those selectmen.
And the selectmen, you know, the answer will have to talk to you.
They don't have to be posted until fourteen days before the meeting, so they still got time to finalize. And they haven't met with everybody that's sponsoring an article yet, to finalize those.
It's too late now, but, yeah.
Now, in reference, in reference to what we talked about, the moratorium article is already there. It's in. Okay? So what you have, I believe Joyce said earlier this evening, it's in the language right there in the handout. So that's already been accepted and reviewed by legal counsel. Legal counsel stamped it, says, yep, it'd be good to go, but we're in this choice. The selectmen already accepted it. Monday night, Monday night, they made a motion to accept all twenty-one articles. Unfortunately, they didn't review them, but that's up to them. And so all twenty-one articles were accepted. John Mason, please, thank you.
Yeah, those are articles that happened except for that. They were proposed to us on Tuesday evening, we did not vote on it.
Oh, good.
We'll be meeting again to go over all twenty articles, to see which ones go to the special. So we're going to be meeting with all people that requested the articles, and we'll talk to them in the meeting. So next selectmen's meeting, I think it's...
Wednesday.
Twenty-sixth.
December?
We'll be having a meeting, we'll be discussing all people that put in those articles, and decide which ones will go to the special and which ones not.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it hard to make a motion on, John, that...
Well, you see, yeah, of this, I received that for this five minutes before the meeting.
Okay, I won't care, but there was a motion made, though.
Even not acceptable.
Okay, I thought you did. So can I ask you a question? I have a, I have a question for you. If we have a little change, change to the wording, which comes out of this hearing, we need to submit it by when, do you know?
We'll be voting on the submission of those articles, I think it's the twenty-sixth. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
When is it?
Wednesday, the twenty-sixth.
All right, can we read the articles, so we can look at them, or have somebody look at them?
Yeah, in the selectmen's office, or if you fancy.
They're in the selectmen's office?
They're not, they're not available. They're not available.
When are they going to be available?
Two weeks before the seventeenth is when they need officially to be posted.
Before December or January?
January seventeenth is when the special town meeting is, and they'll need to be posted in two weeks.
No, but these, December twenty-sixth.
So by January third, they should be posted.
No, so back up, December twenty-sixth, they're going to vote on these articles. So you have to correct word for December twenty-sixth. They're moving to...
I'm going to vote in there. So I should have to review the articles to see which ones go before.
I can't hear you mumble. What'd you say? I can't hear you.
I said, the selectmen will review the articles of all people that have submitted them, and we'll decide which ones go to the special town meeting. Twenty articles going to a special town meeting is kind of...
A lot.
A lot, right? That's not what a special town meeting is for, right? We'll see which ones can be held off, and all town meeting, and which ones can be voted on.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you. We need a microphone.
Yes, you got your hand up. Oh, yeah, Mark, yes. I've heard of reference many times tonight, solar farm. Yeah. And sixty-one A, which is the agricultural use plan. And we have to be very, very careful in your research and your presentation that you don't use that terminology. We as farmers have been warned of other communities in this state for which they're trying to transfer sixty-one A agricultural land to a solar farm, because they're using this terminology. And if they continue to use this terminology, we are going to get ourselves in more trouble, more competition. And we as farmers, legitimate dairy farmers, are already competing for monies in the state of Massachusetts, because these solar farms are saying, we're great the same way you do, after all, we're using sixty-one A. So please, in your research and your presentation at the special town meetings, get rid of that farm. They, currently in the state of Massachusetts, the solar fields, the land that's used need to be taken out of chapter sixty-one before they can build. But it's sixty-one A and B, and B is for... All sixty-ones, they need to be removed. I absolutely know that, but they're still competing for agricultural money. Wow, that is crazy.
Do they harvest energy, or is that why? They think they're harvesting something that's as valuable as yours?
You have to... You have to... So, but please, when you're doing your presentation and your research, scratch the farm, but it's not a farm.
I totally agree. I...
I did.
That's real complex.
And now, I have a thing, what about these marijuana farms needs to be eliminated? Because they don't need any money for farms, they're getting... I know, that's what I'm saying, maybe you can tell me about marijuana farms.
That's different.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, but that's gonna be coming up real quick. Now that is big everywhere, almost.
Got a question for the committee. So if there's a piece of property that is vacant land and is obviously assessed a certain price because it's vacant land, and if there are taxes or whatever owed, like, you know, the example that Mr. Ramsey was saying. So in that particular example, do we get more taxes if a solar farm goes there? Or could it get more taxes if the landowner who had the vacant land put a house on it or some, or sold it to somebody to put a house on it? Would the house produce more taxes than the solar farm, or does the solar farm produce more taxes? Just as a question.
Get rid of farms. Solar fields.
Oh, I'm sorry, solar, solar fields, okay.
Generate more taxes.
So what I was saying, so if we have a piece of land that's, say, ten acres, and it's, say, assessed at, I don't know, forty thousand dollars or whatever, and he owes, the owner owns taxes or whatever in it, and instead of approaching the solar fields, what about if he were to go to a real estate agent and say, "Hey, I wanna, you know, to pay this off, I just put a house on it." So if somebody put, say, a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house on it, I would think, you might know the answer, would that house bring in more tax revenue to the town than a solar farm would, or is it the other way around? I'm sorry?
Ten acres.
If you put ten thousand.
You gotta consider the services that have to be rented by the town owner. You gotta put in a road, you gotta put in, that increases your public services, it increases your schools, number of kids in the schools. Then, then you've gotta come up with a person who's gonna build it, the subdivision, if they put in more than one home. That's a whole different article. The overall, your solar fields are gonna produce a steady rate, gradual rate, if the taxes go up yearly or whatever, folks, I don't know what they're doing, but if they fluctuate or everything, it's a constant number that's coming in for twenty-five years, and that taxes are paid off. So when you look at it, really not, one house, no at all, a subdivision, not at all, because now we're all looking at everything else and what can occur there. So your solar farms do generate a constant tax basis that will come in.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
You know, you have this big problem with all these back taxes and properties, and they're getting all the money. Why don't you have some kind of article that says, "If you don't pay your taxes within so many years, we get your town property."
Good question, do the selectmen and the town attorney...
And we should do that immediately to prevent all this crap from continually going on.
That's kind of already in fact.
Those laws are already under book, and the treasurer and the selectmen...
No, but they have, how many years has it been?
Just because somebody doesn't pay their taxes, pay their taxes, doesn't mean you just go into snap, it'll end up. That, it's a court process, it's an expensive process.
And a long process, because you better extensively look for any relative for that property. Before you send it.
And not only that.
Yeah, but how many years do they get leeway to not pay their taxes?
And not only that, you can't necessarily...
No, but how many years legally do they get?
They go into tax title after, after the second fiscal year, plenty of taxes.
And then what?
And then, well, goes into tax title, and then they have to stay in the treasurer's office for a certain amount of time. And then the treasurer has the option of going to land court, having attorneys going to land court, and then going through the legal process to take the land, the person who owns it. And that's a lengthy process, and there are a lot of, a lot of different things.
So you need someone to shortcut all that?
You can't, you can't, it should not be easy to take somebody's land.
No, no, it's crazy. You make a good budget for solar panels, you did.
But it doesn't, so it doesn't, it should not be easy to take away somebody's land.
No, it should not be easy to take away somebody's land, but it should be...
And it doesn't matter what they're gonna do, and it doesn't matter...
No, it doesn't, except...
Whether they pay their salary.
It should not be...
But you should possibly then have an effect, some kind of article that if you're gonna go into solar, then it affects, yes.
You really can't...
Because I don't want somebody, I don't want somebody that has extended relatives, and then all of a sudden, you know, they get their land taken away because they didn't know that they had this land, that they could have this land. But I do want somebody that's just going to get solar panels and cut all the trees down, if he needs them.
But you can't write...
No, but you gotta figure out a way to do that.
You can't write laws, zoning laws.
No, you can't write laws, but there's gotta be a way around it.
Single out certain businesses or certain...
I just wanna jump back to the buffer. I wonder if there's a way we could, it wouldn't be a this, but we could say that if you've altered your land within a hundred and fifty feet over a certain period of time, then it's, you can't use it for solar. So that we, so we're really trying to say, if you want to...
How can you tell a landlord, "He can't do it anymore with their property"? I pay taxes on it?
No, you can do what you want, no, no, right.
And you're gonna write a bylaw to tell me that I can't cut up to my boundary line?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying you can cut up to your boundary line. But if you cut up to your boundary line, you're disqualifying yourself for a certain amount of time.
How can the law say that? How can the law say that?
For use of solar.
As far as the buffer, like...
Just for the buffer.
How do you know one, how do you know one's gonna put a buffer for solar?
Well, now, if you get a lawyer and stack it...
Once the solar comes into effect, you can say that to the solar company, because they're the least easier to...
No, you could do it this way, you could definitely do this. You could say that for land to be eligible for a solar field, it needs to have a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer of undisturbed natural landscape over some period of time.
Or you could say, "You got a plant trees."
Right, because that's what you have. It's the orders of condition. Planning board has authority to tell these people, "Put the buffer back in." We have that authority, as a board, to say, "If you want this project, and it's so unsightly to the neighbors, because there's neighbors everywhere, you gotta put the buffer back in."
And there are public areas, like this one, for any solar site that wants to go in, there has to be public area.
And so...
But if you try to write a bylaw that limits one specific type of business, the attorney general's gonna send it back to you and say, "It's unconstitutional, you can't do that," and they won't pass it. You know? What if somebody wanted to put a Walmart back there, or something, right?
Then we fall under zoning.
You know, but I mean, if they're putting in on the same piece of property, and they've cut up to the boundary, you're gonna say they can't put there?
Walmart, they're able to put a Walmart there because it's not zoned for a Walmart, right now.
I'm just saying, in a position where it was zoned. In other words, when you write a bylaw, it's gonna be good for all classes. Well, the attorney general's not gonna, not gonna prove it. Let me give you, for instance, let me give you, for instance, let me speak, please, a bit better. Let me give you, for instance, we've been talking here today about the bylaw, I think it's in Brookfield, where they, they...
Can I put that?
North Brookfield, where they put in a limit to how many solar fields they can have in town. If you read the attorney general's reply to that, even though they approved that bylaw, the attorney general was very clear to leave the door open, that although I'm approving this, the state law is they cannot be denied. So tread very carefully when you hit the number thirteen, if you deny it. Because the state law says they can't be denied. So unless you have, and to my knowledge, and I've been researching this on and off for a little bit, because it takes a lot of hours, but to my knowledge, in our immediate area, W, I think, was one town, where they denied a solar farm, and it was actually upheld in land court because it was detrimental to safety, health and welfare of the people. But none of these cases that have been upheld in land court have gone to appellate court yet to be determined. Because the state law is they have a by right to do this. So the feeling is, even by the attorney general's office, that if they do get appealed to the appellate system, they're probably gonna get overturned. The land court will sympathize a lot more with landowners. It's a land court, whereas the appellate court will lean towards the law.
So that is good.
So when we write our bylaws, and when we get to discuss all of this during our moratorium time, we have to obviously use legal counsel, and we have to be smart about what we're trying to do here. Look, you're looking at one planning board member, that I really don't care what the state law says. I am pro-green energy, but I think that what we're doing in Lauren is a sin. And I'll deny it if I feel it should be denied. And I won't take you to court, I really don't care, because I work for you people. And it's your concerns, and my concerns are wetlands, because I think that when we put solar farms together in an area, four, five of them, I think we're increasing the size of those wetlands. I think we're making things worse. On that alone, I would have no problem if I saw that in a project reform, you're saying, "No, I can't."
Hey, I'm a nurse, and you're creating not wetland, you're creating cesspools with mosquitoes and disease, thank you very much. Okay, so we have a question here.
So as far as...
So get rid of the wetlands, thanks.
So as far as the hundred, one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer, they, right now, they put whatever they want in there for greenery. They said, they said they could put Christmas trees, bushes, shrubs, whatever. Is there a way we can define natural, as far as like, you're playing, you took out oaks, you're putting back oaks?
You voted it in last year as a special permit. With a special permit now, which came into effect May eighth, and we haven't acted on any plans...
Yet.
Yet, okay? Since May eighth, they're still in the works, each and every one that was mentioned a while back. Special permit, okay? You want deciduous trees put in, we'll put it. You want conifers, you're gonna have an input. We're gonna listen. You want this, and abovite, no, well, excuse me, I can't say abovite. From anything, from wait-a-minute vines to poison ivy. You want it, we'll consider it. Then when we look at it, in the orders of conditions, and in the special permit, we will enact a natural buffer. A natural buffer indigenous to the area.
So the planning...
You know what I mean by that, correct?
Exactly what species they're putting in.
It can be done that way, yes. And this is the first time that we're going to be able to do it as these projects start coming into the planning board for the site plan and the special permit. And that can even mean, as I made a comment before, about moving their retention ponds. Take me to court again. Take enough, okay? Take me to court again on behalf of you folks, I have no problem.
Like Mr. Ramsey said in the beginning, we're not working with them. They have to work with us, so they can come to the meeting, and you can listen to them tell you about they're gonna put in pine trees and quick retreat, and it means nothing. They put in what the planning board said, and that gets determined by what the people want. What you want.
We've had lawyers sit in the background, we've had lawyers sit to the right and left. We've had lawyers come in and bar them this up in the past a couple of mornings.
But not your lawyers, right? Their lawyers.
When we've been, when we've emailed them and told them, "No, be more specific," they decide to show up. It just doesn't happen anymore, folks. It's not gonna be overrun by that crap. I'm tired of it, and I'm looking at it, and I got a case that didn't even know what. But unfortunately, it's not gonna get committed. All right?
So, planning board, is it possible that if you zone in a specific area for where these solar panels go, and you can't deny and permit, as long as it goes where you've made a zone for that?
A lot of towns have done that successfully, yes. Because it's, you know, they have certain areas zoned for businesses, yeah. Lots of...
Andy?
Andy put in a bylaw for moratorium.
Yeah, Andy put in the moratorium, and I believe Wilberham, there's a member of Wilberham Board that shows up to the office every once in a while. It's a fellow we've gotten along with, and I've been in training sessions with him. And Wilberham, yes, is all, certain areas are... Okay, but then, when you look at that, folks, you gotta look at their, you gotta look at their scenarios, their towns, and how their towns are set up too. Okay, you got flatlands in Wilberham more than we got here, all right? We've got, they don't have as big a fields as, as we do certain areas. They have, on flatlands, and work farms, and other, other type of areas. But we've got the hills, we've got the contours and everything here that, you know, these folks can put above sideways if they want. If you look around, you can see some of the fields that are local, right on nine and thirty-two, take a right on thirty-two off nine. My God, they gotta go in every which way they can go. There's no stopping that. They don't care what the terrain looks like, or what the contour looks like, or what's underneath there. So that's another thing that we've been talking about, is what's underneath. One engineer said the other night, "It doesn't matter, we'll drill as deep as we have to the center."
I thought you were talking about these, these are billionaires in market economy.
Well, that's, that's, that's a thing where the chief's been great, he's been working with boards, and having more and more impact, important, and it'll have impact on them. So it, again, it's just a learning process, I mean, it's not, are we at fault for letting them commit? No. I'll take that, you wanna say I am, that's fine, go ahead. Now that you're all showing up, you know what the hell is going on. I have people behind me, the planning board has people behind them, Joyce and conservation has people behind them. You haven't been here before, except for the last four months. And it's a recent statement. So we appreciate it.
To, to close up about the, that one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer. We just had a project that they wanted us to raid the buffer. And what I understood, they were stating that because of the views. The buffer is not just for the views, the buffer is to protect the neighbors, you know, protect the fauna, the trees and everything, but also is to not encourage these companies to follow up a project. So I'm hoping that a lot of the time, these projects with the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer, they are not affected anymore, so they will accept that. They take the project out because the one-hundred-and-fifty buffer is not good for that energy. But that's the main object of the buffers, you know, not, not for the views, but to that.
There's gonna be a whole lot of issues going on. You cut down trees, and you got water, and Florida's aquifers, and it's gonna be awful.
This boy, yeah.
Yes, I just wanna get, so I wanna get confirmation, the, everything that has been applied for with these permits up to this point, you had said these are going to be solar fields?
No, we didn't. Everything that has been applied for is in the process of being heard. It's only an application. If I'm wrong, Barbara, or Derek, or Kathy can correct me. Everyone that has come forth, except only one, is in the workings, the rest of them have only met informational hearings. And two of them walked out, because they didn't like my attitude.
Which ones in the workings?
Little rest, we discussed that at the beginning of the meeting.
And, and another question, where can we get information on what they proposed up to this point?
What does that mean, propose, sir? The plans?
Yeah, the plans, or...
The, a copy of the plans that we stated at every meeting can be picked up at the planning board office during the working hours, Mondays, Monday, Wednesdays and Thursdays. Or you can get, once conservation gets the plans, right, was getting them. I'm sure through Joyce's secretary, which is in the planning board, you can go in and ask for them to get a copy to you once they have them there. They might have them, they might have them there also.
Okay, thank you.
You can also email the conservation office. Oftentimes, we have electronic plans that can be mailed out for review. If that helps with the office hours not always being, I mean, we only have six hours of office of, of support, so we don't always have somebody in the office, yes?
On little rest, again, I can leave my cards, if you email me, I'm happy to send you a digital copy.
The gentleman here that's speaking, thank you. He's been an engineer in town with the process going on, and he's been present in all the meetings, and been offering assistance to, or to let people find out where it's going, okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
The moratorium doesn't pass, so is it like a select committee meeting at the end of the hour?
So when the moratorium gets passed, we'll work on creating bylaws that will have to go and be approved by town council. And we will, we have to submit it, and, well, we have to get out the warrant so they can be at the official town meeting.
In May.
In May, and that, at that point, you would vote for the...
And, um, that, at that point, you would vote for the, the bylaws.
So, in, in, in my opinion, nothing will change either way. If the moratorium is voted down, we're still gonna work on changing the bylaws for May. But we, we're gonna do it under duress. If it gets imposed, then we have some breathing room. Because at least we know then that nothing new is gonna get impugned until the new bylaws are passed. But if it gets voted down, then they could just keep coming in. We can continue working on the bylaws, but it's not gonna stop them from...
And when's the earliest that you could have it for a vote in the town?
Oh, the moratorium? Oh, that would be the May, we could be shooting for the May annual town meeting, okay? Yes.
Oh, so, I, I missed, Bill pointed out that I missed two very important things. Two public hearings need to take place between now and the town meeting. That would, um, present the, any proposed bylaw changes? And it would be similar to this, it would be an open discussion.
So, you follow?
Rachel, as the assistant assessor now, do you work with the other assessors in the area to try to maximize tax income?
I don't really have any power, so I find it goes to be contacted with them, because I go by them contracts. The solar companies.
But don't we have charge or value on the land or the equipment or the...
It's a personal property tax on the solar field. So it's, it's different than a real estate tax, it's a personal property, so it's not just the... Um, and then there's a tax on the land. Who pays the taxes on it? To whomever owns it, either the landowner and who pays that, and then some of them guys. Um, but those are, there's two separate taxes on that one, personal, so you have the tax, and then the personal property tax. The only recourse, uh, the only negative about the personal property is that there is no recourse if they stop taking. We can't foreclose, we can't forge tax titles, so there's a report. Yeah, we can take them forward.
No, they, yeah, for registrations. We still can't take your car.
No, no, but you can.
Right. So I can't really go registration on my car, so I can't access it.
You know, boot for solar farms.
Boot for solar.
That's a good idea.
That would be the ultimate, that would be natural, and I believe state would have...
Let's start with, say, we have power, which means, I figure you haven't paid taxes with power now. I think, I think it would get paid pretty... I didn't know if they were offering any trade.
Yeah. That would be the power. We'd be...
More tax dollars.
We can take that away. But that wasn't a one of the panels.
Well, we answered a lot of questions this evening. I think, ooh, you can wrap it up?
Any other questions?
Last minute? Okay.
I just say thank you all for your time and energy that you put into helping us make this change happen. We all appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I do wanna add, I have solar panels in my home. That's very much different than this, so don't hate, don't be haters for all kinds of solar panels.
I just want to thank all of you for coming out, and it's time that the citizens that are being affected get together, inform one group. And, and I say this at most every meeting, and I'll continue to say, your biggest weapon is your staff. Right, your center, right, your representative, right, the government. Form and contact people in Westport that feel the same way you do, that are dealing with the same problem. Make it a bigger group. The legislators are working on some relief for the towns. How motivated they are to do it, I don't know, there's a lot of money in the store. Okay, but, the more people they hear from, the better off they'll be.
And then you have to know, right?
So?
Then you have to know, and I did. Thank you.